This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the April 19, 2021 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Meeting called to order. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? I do see a, a, um, a peace tree discussion and now's the appropriate time. Mr. Michael Calhoun participated in the last council meeting in the audience participation. And he talked about the peace tree again. And so we, we never really talked about it as a council, uh, the rest of the meeting. And so I'm asking the, the, uh, councillors present tonight if they're interested in putting in on new business. Um, and we could have that further discussion, um, in the new business segment, so. All we need is a consensus for that.
That's fine with me.
Okay, well, add the, uh, and Grant, is that okay with you?
If it's okay with Michael, he might have to wait a while.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, well, I'm good.
We'll put it under new business, uh, letter B, peace tree discussion. Any other additions or corrections? If not, would anyone like to move, we accept the agenda tonight with the one addition.
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda with that one amendment.
So moved by councillor Williams, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Webb. Uh, would you call the roll please, Stephanie?
Councillor Allen is absent, councillor Webb.
Aye.
Councillor Williams.
Aye.
Councillor Potter.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Hello JR.
Hi, sir, I'm late, had some technical difficulties.
Hi JR. Are there any, uh, any presentations tonight? Okay, moving right into the mayor's report and this time of month, the second council meeting, we, we recognize a citizen of the month. In this case, it will be the citizen of the month of April. And I believe it's councillor Webb's, um, honored duty this, this month to, uh, choose a citizen. And so I'll turn it over to councillor Webb.
Thank you, Mayor Hobart. My citizen of the month moved here in August of 2000. In the same month, he joined the Lions Club after visiting our local barber. And I think, uh, maybe a few ear prods, yeah, what he said, you know, he has a, has a way of snagging your, the, uh, squill on air plug here, um, with the scissors. Anyhow, this person worked with the city administrator on public works issues before we even had a public works committee. He thought it was around 2001, uh, Dick Klein, I think he was, said was the administrator. And he has served on the public works committee since its formation. Uh, this person has attended budget meetings since 2001, has been on the budget committee for most of those years. I didn't get an exact number of years out of him. I don't think anybody can remember. My citizen of the month helped spearhead the drug coalition as, and was one of the first to help sponsor the skate park idea. Uh, you know, it's been brought up several times, but that was originally him and some other people. I would like to thank my citizen of the month for years of service to our community. He has added to the soundness of city government oversight of city projects and the city budget. Volunteers are what make Vernonia special. My pick for the citizen of the month is George Tice. I don't think George, I don't think George could be here tonight. He, uh, he, I think he had to be out of the area, so.
Another meeting.
Thank you councillor Webb, and, and it was a great choice, I believe, and, and I've had the honor and pleasure of working alongside George, uh, the last, well, quite a few years in the Lions Club. He's done an awful lot, um, for our community as serving as a lion. He's been, uh, president, I, I think, several terms and, and he's done a lot of, a lot of work for the community, so. I think it was a good choice and I look forward to seeing him, uh, next week, I think is our first budget meeting and it's always good to see George. You can depend on him and, and a great choice. Thank you councillor Webb. Okay, are there any councillor committee meeting reports tonight? Or JR, I see you had your hand up. Go ahead, you, yeah?
Oh, well, I hate to interrupt, but I'd like to back up if you wouldn't mind two additions or corrections to the agenda since I missed it.
Um, well, yeah, what do you, what do you need there? You just need some information?
I'd like to place an item on the agenda for tonight.
Well, we already, we already made a motion to accept, uh, that I, um, is it something that's really pressing or?
It's up to you. I can forget it or we can do it next time.
I just assume, get on with the meeting.
Okay.
Um, are there any councillor committee meeting reports? I attended the senior board meeting last week. And, um, pretty much general run-of-the-mill meeting, um, they had another stellar month in the thrift store. In fact, the Saturday prior, they did $500 in one day. So I think for the month of, uh, March, they did, they had over $4,500 in, in proceeds, so. In light of the COVID and, and the, um, what they've done, they've really, um, and you know, my hat, hats off to Teresa Kilgore for being a big part of that. She works so hard and there's a lot of volunteers that, that help out there every day and so, um, that, that's a lot, really good news for the seniors. I think there's some, uh, business picking up for the cabin. They're getting more renovations, uh, now for the summer. But, um, other than that, it was pretty, pretty, uh, pretty good meeting and of course, we miss, uh, Eileen Grady and she was a big part of the senior group and so, you know, there was a few people that talked about her and what she's done for the senior board, but, um, it was a good meeting, so that's all I have to report on that. Are there any topics from the floor tonight?
I have one.
Okay.
Um, it's from Janice Cockrell, and I'm, I have to apologize, I can't say her last name, it starts with a C. And it says, "I am unable to attend this evening's city council meeting, but I would like to voice my support of a Hiroshima peace tree proposal. I just moved to Vernonia from Lake Oswego in January. Lake Oswego has a peace tree and it has posed no problems. It was a lovely and significant addition to the community. Sincerely, Janice Cockrell, C.," in Vernonia.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Moving right into council deliberations, PA 20-01. And I'd like to, um, we both, we spent two and a half hours at the last meeting, um, going over these items and, and so, um, has everyone, everyone got their, the revisions that we, uh, presented? We'd like to have Matt change and note. So what I, rather than going all, have Matt go through all of them again, or I'd like to, um, open it up for, uh, any questions, um, that, uh, council might have for Matt on these, uh, items, uh, that we changed or amended. Councillor Allen.
Yeah, um, Matt, maybe you could help clarify this. Who, who wrote all of this? 209 pages I have in my hand, who did all the redlining and all the blue lining and green lining? Was that you or is this a, uh, a group effort?
Sorry, oh, yeah, all the edits were done by me.
All the redlining?
Yes, sir.
So you pretty much, you pretty much are, have done all this?
Well, I didn't write the entire code, but I made all the edits that you have in your hand there, you bet.
Okay, okay, 'cause, um, I don't know if the other councillors had a chance to grant, read this. Um, I have most of it, probably 99% of it. Um, and I honestly had serious questions when I read through the details. The summary that's in our packet is very light on details. So in my opinion, if you haven't read this, you shouldn't be voting on it. Um, 'cause I don't think you can understand it unless you read the details and, um, I think maybe a workshop's in order here. Um, I hate to say that, but we have argued for years, even months and weeks over one thing, like parking. We're talking multiple, multiple, multiple things that are really going to affect real people in this town with real money. And giving away power, taking power from the planning commission, giving it to, um, a lot of designations changed from the mayor to council to planning commission to, um, a lot of terminology's changed that I'd like to discuss, and I don't think we're ever going to have time for it in one Zoom meeting. So, um, I don't know, that's just kind of where I'm at on it. Unless the other councillors can tell me they've read this and understand it and can explain it to me, I don't know if I'm ready to vote on it tonight.
Any other discussions? Councillor Webb?
Uh, yeah, we spent a couple hours on this. We worked our way through those changes point by point last meeting. It's only the changes that we had questions on. Uh, they brought back revisions. Uh, I was under assumption we were only looking at those revisions. The only thing left in my mind was the, the last one on ADUs. Um, we kind of got stymied dirt into the meeting and that's why we tabled. Um, my, personally, myself, after looking it over, I'm, I'm good with it. So some of these revisions that have, haven't, you have an issue with, uh, JR?
Well, there's multiple, multiple, multiple pages in here of changes that I don't think that unless you've read all this, I, you know, I'm just asking if everybody read it and understand it, because I've read it and there's still a lot of questions I have. I could go through line by line by line and clarify things, but it wasn't provided in a printout packet. And I'm just wondering if anybody's, everybody's had a chance to really go through it.
Councillor Webb?
I have not had the opportunity to go through it all yet.
Councillor Potter has gone through about a third of it.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Um, so I did offer to print it off for people who needed it. I just didn't want to have to print off many thousands of pages of copies of it when they literally just get thrown in the dumpster after the meeting. Um, so the offer was standing and it's been posted for, I don't know, a month for people to be able to read it. Um, just so you guys know.
Councillor Webb?
Yeah, and it's, it's only the revisions that we're really talking to, the, you know, there's 248 pages and, you know, I cruised through it a couple of times today, but I'm only concerned with the revisions, because that's the only thing that we're doing. Action wise, the rest of it's already been in place. So, I mean, if we have issues with those parts of it, we need to be getting with Matt for the next revision, which there'll probably be a new revision right away when we decide our sidewalk gutter and curb section. That'll all change, but, um, you know, going through the highlights today didn't really take that much. I mean, you know, there, there was, you know, the, the building on a slope, which is, they added a whole kind of new section in there. But we went through that last meeting, everybody thought that was a good upgrade. And I'm, I'm willing to move forward, but.
I, I tend to agree. I thought that when this was first presented to us last council meeting, all the print and italics were the changes and revisions. And that's what I studied last day and we spent two and a half hours going through those changes. And, uh, had quite a bit of discussion about it and then we got to 20 and there were still some questions about building height and, and, um, you know, I remember the last discussion about the building height was determined to be 45 feet. And, and then we kind of ran out of time and, and we decided to, to, uh, discuss it in our, in this meeting and, um, I, I just read it again right before the meeting and I don't have any problem with the revisions, uh, in number 20, so. Go ahead, JR.
Yeah, um, I hear what you're saying. You're probably reading the glossary in our, in our packet. But when I actually printed the code out and read it, um, there's quite a bit of changes to page 206, 205, 202, 194, 192, 191, 183, 148, 162, 161, 160. Page 159, 158, 157, 156, 155, 154, 153, 152. And I've got three more pages here. There's also changes to 151, 150, 149, 148, 47, 46, 45, 44, 142, 141, 128, 126, 125, 122 through 117, 112, 160, and page 68. Also page 45, 46, 47, 37, page 29, page 30, and page 9. And I left out some of the small ones. Though, if you haven't read this, there's no way you can understand how to vote on it. There's a huge state conglomerate takeover of our town that's going to cost people, I, I mean, I, I read through it and the amount of permission and state agencies and notification to state agencies to build anything, if you got a drop of water on your property is going to take forever and cost you a fortune. The way I'm reading it, unless I'm wrong, someone could explain that to me. But, uh, it's, it's like a takeover of the state organ, even though it says we have a right to, in here, that we have a right to have our own standards. On page 37, it says that. Page 37. No, no, not page 37, sorry. Page 37, it also says there's no standards for ADUs. We had a quiet discussion about having those things look good. And it says there's no standards if it's to the rear or to the side of the house. No design standards. Am I wrong on that? Somebody correct me.
Those are accessory structures, not accessory dwelling units. And that's what the city council wanted to have happen last week, last two weeks ago.
37?
So Matt, that's like a pole barn?
Right, that's the pole barn discussion. That's exactly right. You bet. Accessory dwelling units are at the end of the zoning ordinance, page 205, not page 37.
Here's page 37 highlighted. An accessory shell, use shall comply with the design requirements for principal use when they are located in front of a primary use, except as this code specifically allows in the contrary, when located next to or to the rear of the primary use. There are no design standards.
That's for accessory structures though, not for accessory dwelling units.
Okay, I stand corrected, but still no design standards.
Well, but there's meaning that they don't have to match the house. There's design standards that are required by building code for a pole barn. You're going to have to meet form load, all the stress testing, the siding's got to be what it is. We're just saying it doesn't have to match the house, which is what council said. Unless it's right next to the house, it can not match the house.
Yeah, I remember talking about that one, just when it says no design standards, someone could come in and go, well, there's no standards. I can do whatever the heck I want.
But the design is the things that are attached, like cornices, raft posts. That's what our whole code means as design standards are the pretty elements.
Right.
Not, not actual building standards or finishes or stuff like that.
Well, that was the least of my concerns out of all this. I have a whole list I could go over, but this should have been read by every councillor. It should have been provided, not if you want to print it out. To me, it should have been printed out times five, here you go. No excuses not to go through it and have questions.
So instead of defense, we try not because, not because of paper costs, but we try to not print things you guys are just going to throw away if you're going to look at it online anyway. If any councillor would like things printed every time, we are happy to do that. But we try to not print tons of stuff because it costs us on the copier, it costs us paper, and then it just, some people never pick them up. So if anybody would like Stephanie to always print, she's happy to do that.
Yeah, I understand that. It's just, if you have troubles loading it and you open up something that, a large file like that, you can go through the first 30, 40 pages here and think there's no changes and get bored. But when you get into the meat of it, about page 100 or so, it gets crazy with the changes that, you know, as far as redlining and trying to understand what's going on. So, uh, I, I just don't want it to get buried in, oh, I'm just going to give up and I'm just going to vote yes or no. Uh, to me, the people voted ye and you should have an understanding of what you're voting for, at least, you know, 95% of it. And, and I've read through this and I, and it's still, it's confusing. It's state agencies and it's permission slips and it's on and on and on.
So since we're in it, why don't we just go over councillor Allen's concerns? Maybe other councillors would have those same concerns?
Councillor Webb, you had, or go ahead councillor Williams.
I don't have a problem with the things that were presented to us and we discussed, and that's what we're voting on.
Councillor Webb?
Yeah, I, I agree with councillor Williams, because we went through those changes two weeks ago. We batted those around. There were some things, revisions to those changes that we wanted. Those are what are before us tonight. We can go back through, you know, Matt was willing to pull those up and go through those revisions, but we'd already looked at everything one time over. I agree with staff. I pull it up electronically, I go through, you know, sometimes I read some of it because it interests me. But most of it, I'm running through finding the red lines. Okay, what's the change? Why is the change? That's probably what we're voting on. So, and we, if you do it that way, it doesn't take that long to scan through that document. You don't have to read everything line for line until you get to the revisions, then you got to start wrapping your head around it.
Councillor Williams?
Well, I think JR does have a good point though. If there's things in there that aren't clear to him, they're, they might not be clear to other people as well. And if he was to present at some other time, other things that needed to be addressed, then I think we should do that. But not tonight.
Go ahead, councillor Allen.
Well, all due respect, two of the councillors have already admitted they haven't read the material and I haven't heard from the mayor.
I just said what my piece on it.
This is what I'm talking about, the, all the changes that are in here. They don't match the small version.
Okay, because I don't, I don't like the direction it's going a little bit, but, so what doesn't match councillor Allen?
The details. I mean, all the work, all the changes that are in here are not in here. That, that I'm aware of. I found stuff in there. I was like, whoa.
So tell me a whoa, because I'm not following. Like what's something that you feel is an overreach of the state government? I'm not following on that point. The FEMA stuff or?
Uh, yeah, a lot of the wetland stuff. It starts, talks about, uh, you know, the CLOMR and all those certificates and the, uh, and the LOMR.
Yeah, letters, not amendments?
Wetlands certificates, those are FEMA documents.
Yeah, so that's.
A letter of map recognition. It's something you file with the federal government when you need to change a floodplain.
City engineers and, and slope mitigations and water mitig, it just goes on and on and on. I'm most worried people are going to get bottled up and, and, and in a bureaucracy and never be able to build anything.
So the things that are connected to FEMA, we don't really have a ton of choice in that. Um, in order for our citizens, being an area that's flooded twice in the last 20 years, in order for our citizens to be eligible for the national flood insurance, which is, the government overwrites that, um, we have to follow their rules. The flip side is, we could say, forget it FEMA, we're not going to follow any of your rules. And then all of our citizens, if they wanted their homes insured, would have to go get private flood insurance, which from what I understand in other communities is astronomical, they're not able to. Then the mortgage company gets the insurance and charges it on their mortgage, so then their payment goes kind of out of whack. So there's not a ton of that. We have a, because we want our citizens to have national flood insurance as an option, we can't pick and choose which one of FEMA's regulations will follow. For the most part, our ordinance, we've been had in place and have been making people follow, is more stringent than these changes. It's just that our ordinance wasn't in Title IX the way these changes are showing in Title IX now. It's a separate ordinance that Matt or Ben and I require people to follow when they come in to do things in the floodplain.
And thanks for that info, Josette. I, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm trying to do my job.
Yeah.
Um, there's a lot of good in there. I'm not saying it's all bad. Some of it, to me, is, is giving away a lot of authority. It's changing a lot of authority from the planning commission to, how'd you guys term it? It's not the city administrator, you call it, uh, anyway, I'll have to. anyway, I'll have to look on my notes here. And then it takes a lot of stuff away from the Planning Commission and I don't know why.
I don't recall any of the edits taking anything from the Planning Commission.
I can only think of two. What are your two? Uh, one, they didn't wanna have to see the final plots anymore because they had never seen them before. And number two, it was a council change they decided to take away from the Planning Commission, and that was for...
Signs that were too big and didn't meet the rules went from, instead of Planning Commission, went directly to city council on a type three. That's one of the recent changes we made from two weeks ago.
Those are the only two that pop into my head.
Well, they call it a floodplain administrator. It's in there several times.
Oh, that's-
Multiple pages.
That's Josette.
Okay, so we're calling the city administrator the floodplain administrator?
No, I actually went to training to be the floodplain administrator.
She wears different hats.
A week of training in Seattle.
Okay, so there was a lot of scratch outs there with Planning Commission and then changed to floodplain administrator. So that's what was confusing me.
Yeah, because Planning Commission, we, to stay floodplain administrator, we have to keep up on what the rules are and any new changes, and so the Planning Commission isn't required to do that at all. So that's what the, week on that is, is that someone that's up to date with what can be done or our goal most of the time is to let people have useful right of their property, however that may be done in the floodplain. So we try to figure out how they can get what they want within the hoops.
And I, I think the change you're probably seeing where it takes it away from Planning Commission, that's a template that Matt put in there and changed it to floodplain administrator. It was never the Planning Commission's authority for the city of Veronia to be the floodplain manager.
Oh, oh.
That was another, that was another concern of mine as I was reading through all these records. And I was like, well, who's gonna administer all these changes and rules and notify, you have to notify federal government agencies by the dozens when someone gets a building permit or something in a floodplain or floodway.
Yes.
I was kinda thinking, why do we wanna bring this on ourselves if we're, are we not in compliance now the way we've been doing it?
No, we are in compliance. They just want the, the required changes to be in your code, not in a separate ordinance that could be lost at times. So when people are coming to use their land, the land use requirements of the federal government are right there in black and white with all the other uses of the land rules.
Some of these changes, I've looking up on the, on the LOMC or some of these terminologies, I look them up and I, the fee structure is very hard to understand on the state of Oregon's website. Some stuff will say free, single house, this or that, and it's confusing language, and some of it's six hundred dollars. Some of it's eight hundred dollars. Some of it's just a lot, you know, you can't keep track of the fees. And I know we're in here, doesn't tell me exactly what the fees are gonna be uh, for the changes. And I'm just worried that it's gonna get, not only the fees, but the, the bureaucracy's gonna bog down, not only our staff, but our community.
So JR, tell me what page you're looking at that, the acronym.
Well, well, it talks about the conditional letter of map revision and the LOMC in one, well, multiple pages, but one fifty-five for an example.
Okay, so I can help you understand that. So, um, I think Counselor Potter's actually has one of those. So when a flood event happens and the high watermarks are figured out, if you're gonna do a letter of map amendment, that's gonna show, hey, my property didn't really flood like all the people are saying, and they can prove that their property elevation is higher. And the reason there isn't a clear fee is it really depends on how much property you're asking that map amendment, whatever the costs are to change that, because the, the huge firm map that if you lay over on GIS, different floodplains, that would have to change. So that, that's what the fee is related to. The feds and the institutional change at the big map level. For ours, floodplain development, there's never gonna be a fee because we want compliance. So it's just in like, say, if you owned a piece of property and another flood event happened, hopefully not, um, and you didn't get the same water your neighbor did, you as a citizen have a right to get a letter of map amendment and have the map actually show you didn't get the water your neighbor did. You weren't as deep in the water or you're in this other level that, that, um, let me just, I'm gonna pull up the map so I can show you what, what that looks like. So hold on one second. Because I think it's helpful to see somebody that did those letter of map amendment. One second. So those are all things we've been working and had to deal with and the citizenry has been dealing with this whole time. It's just now in Title IX instead of in its own ordinance, but let me-
Yeah, these were always part of the city's implementation of federal programs, but now the federal government wants us to add a lot of that stuff directly into our zoning code, so it's nothing new. It will still be us doing business the same way we've always been doing, done business. We're certainly not adding new log jams to the process. We're just clarifying what has to happen with the federal government in our local zoning code.
Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen real quick. It's gonna take it a second to load in here. So I'm gonna use Counselor Potter as an example. So do you well, it's downstream, it's downstream, oh, I thought she was, oh, there we go. Hold on, it's taking a minute. I gotta get to the right spot. But do you see how this spot above the barn and Lorna's house is yellow versus the red all around it? This is, this is the barn?
Yep.
So that was done by a letter of map amendment by those property owners proving through a process, usually it's involved with the surveyor or an engineer, to formally say to the government, no, you're gonna show that my property wasn't inundated the same way and the surveyor and all the engineers proved that to the federal government, and then they can get a letter of map amendment or a clarification of map amendment, and then you'll see, so that's shaded X. That's somewhere in town where there was a low on both sides of those properties, but the middle area was all higher than that. And then I'll show you one more place where we had to do it. We did it for the sewer lagoons when we elevated them. You see how those are elevated and how when community action team elevated all of the apartments, those are now above the floodplain in the shaded X zone, so they got a letter that said, hey, all of our asset is now above the danger zone. That helps them with insurance. It helps them with all these things. That's what a LOMA, or a LOMER is, is those letters of map amendment. And the cost is associated with how much space you're gonna do have them change, and then the cost associated with proving that change.
Okay.
So that's what those are, if that helps.
On page one sixty, it was talking about properties that are not designated yet. You'd have to go through the process? Page one sixty, paragraph F?
Let me get there. Oh, no, I went too far. Paragraph F. Sorry, when I typed in one sixty, it did it of the whole packet, not of the thing.
This is talking about the designation of regulatory floodways, and in the city of Veronia, we've already designated all the floodways in the city. So this sort of doesn't apply, but Josette can probably explain that better than I can.
So the other reason I think it's in here JR is because, so, um, every time there is a flood event, the Army Corps of Engineers issues a new flood mapping, and it's based on the most recent flood. So if you look at our nineteen ninety-six flood maps, they stayed that way until the two thousand seven flood happened, and then in two thousand twelve, we got new flood maps. And they're always based on the most recent, highest water.
Okay, because somewhere in here, it says we're adopting the nineteen eighty-eight map.
Well, that's the first one we have, but I don't know where, and potentially that's a future change we need to address with.
Yeah, I, I read it in there. I don't know if I noted it on here, but it does say we've adopted the map of nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah, I think they, I think that's our first starting map, so that may need to be upgraded to the-
And then when I read that, and then I read this, I thought, well, man, is everybody gonna have to pay to get an upgraded map?
No, so that's just the government giving the municipality the map. So they're slow to change, so the NV eighty-eight was the one we had initially. And then two thousand seven flood happened. It was five feet higher, so they had to issue the two thousand twelve map. But really, all the numbers on the maps relate to how engineers calculate the elevations of property and homes. So an engineer can use the NV eighty-eight map to do his calculation, which, with different calculations he'll have to do to get the right number. And when someone gives us an elevation certificate, they have to say, I use this map to determine this property. They have to say all that in an elevation certificate. So that we can prove, hey, you're, you're doing it right or you're not.
Okay.
To the feds.
I, I kinda expected to see like a two thousand seven or ten or whatever, and then when I saw eighteen eighty-eight, it kinda threw me a little bit.
And it could just be referencing the first one. I have to look at the page, but that may be needing to be updated to the most current one, too. I'd, I'd have to dig through there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't think I noted it or I can't find it right now.
Any other questions from staff? Are we ready to move on then, counsel?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're moving down to the ADU section?
Number twenty, you mean?
Are you wanting Matt to, to go over the proposed changes and finish talking about number twenty?
Yeah, sure.
Well, we didn't actually propose any changes in twenty, uh, because the direct, uh, the direction we got from city council was that they wanted to think about it. And so we didn't actually propose any, any modifications beyond what the Planning Commission already worked on and what we brought to you the first time two weeks ago.
So what page is that?
Uh, starts at page two oh five in the version that we just recently sent out to everybody. And I think one of the things that Counselor Ellen was, uh, wanting to take pause on and think about was the way we worded it. There are some things in here that the state is requiring us to do, and we have absolutely no choice. Our hands are tied, and that is that, uh, an accessory dwelling unit has to be owner occupied. We have to scratch that now. So they could rent out an ADU and rent out the house, and there's nothing we can do about it. And then we also had to scratch the provision that assess, that our parking is required for an accessory dwelling unit. The state said we can't do that, and so we scratched that, too. But above and beyond what the state required us to do, we are also, uh, proposing some larger changes. I will openly admit they are larger, and these were things that were requested by the DLCD, and that is specifically item C on page two oh five is what I think was giving Commissioner, um, Allen some heartburn, and that was that we've removed the size limitations. Before, the city had a size limitation of thirty-three percent of the living area or eight hundred and eighty square feet, and the ADU couldn't be any bigger. Well, we've gotten rid of that, and so now an ADU can be the exact same size as the primary dwelling, if you want. And we don't have to do that. If, if it's the determination of the city council to scratch that, we can scratch it. It's not required by state law, not at all.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Can you tell me the page of the code that it is actually on, not the, not the PDF?
Uh, it's on, the, the bottom of the PDF says page two oh five.
It's two oh five, right here.
That, yeah, that's-
No. In the PDF, it is a PDF version. It should have its own page numbers on the left side. Is that it?
I've got the Word version opened up. Let me try to open up the, uh, I mean, I can tell you it's, it's section nine dash eleven. Yeah, nine dash eleven C. What page number is it on your PDF?
It is. You're right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's got occupancy limitation, number of residents. So there's no total of, you, you could have a hundred people in two houses.
I think, is that a state thing saying we can't limit?
Well, item C was scratched, and that said occupancy limitations before, and it wasn't a limitation of how many people. That was a limitation of the owner living on the property.
No, D.
We scratched because the DLCD, uh, said that the, our definition of family was inconsistent with state law, so we scratched the definition of family way back in the definitions section. So once we scratched that, we had to scratch D here as well that said the total number of people that could be living in an ADU or a primary unit for that matter. And so we deleted that.
Doesn't that become a fire hazard for, if there's too many people, they can't get out in time? That seemed like there'd be a fire code issue somewhere in there.
Well, the building occupancy factor is different from a land use code telling people what they can do from a land use perspective, so all the building rules would still apply for certain, but they're in a completely separate ordinance. They're in the Oregon Building Code, International Building Code, rather, sorry. And this is, uh, just a land use code, so they're different places.
I got you.
Counselor Williams.
Matt, I, I think I remember you saying that you could build a new house that, or a, a new building bigger than the primary. You would just switch to designation.
That's correct.
And the old one would become the ADU.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so all size limitations are now out the door, and so if you wanted to build, if you had a three thousand square foot house and wanted to build a twenty-eight hundred square foot ADU, that would be allowed. So I think this actually grants people more freedom, not less.
But you'd also have to meet all the setbacks and all the-
Oh, for certain, for certain. And your lot coverage, if you had a six thousand square foot lot and it was already almost forty percent covered in your existing building, and you wanted to build another one the same size, you couldn't do it because you'd be exceeding your lot coverage limitation of, uh, fifty percent. And your setbacks as well. That's correct, yeah.
I noticed on D, though, you scratched the height limitation of eighteen feet.
No, we've just said that the height limitation is based on the primary underlying zone now. We didn't make another separate, smaller height limit for ADUs. But it still has a height limitation. It's just the same one that would be in the primary zone, which I believe is thirty-five feet for R and GR.
I think it was, if I remember right, it was Counselor Webb that was really concerned about the size and parking. If you don't have anywhere to park on the property, where are you gonna park? So I think we were discussing about, do we really wanna go with no size limitations or keep it the way it was? Am I correct on, uh, my statement there, Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I've always been concerned about parking. It's an issue with me. I had a bigger concern. Uh, the discussion was that we didn't even have to allow ADUs because we're underneath the population number, but I, I revisited that. Uh, we've already started some in town that can't be jerking rug out from under people now, so I think the, the horses left the barn. State, state's got us tied up on the parking, so I can't do anything about that. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pull ADUs out of this just because of the parking, so. They got me boxed in, JR.
Well, I'm thinking if we don't have to say you can build it as big as you want, then there's absolutely no room to park a car off of the street. I'm not against ADUs. I've had my grandmother-in-law live in one out on a farm. It worked out quite well. It was- I've had my grandmother-in-law live in one out on a farm. It worked out quite well. It was built on a trailer, and of course, now it's gone. But that was out on a farm, but. So I guess we should decide about the size limitation here, one way or another, and move forward. Currently, we had it set at 33% or 800 square feet for a cap, is I remembering that right?
That's correct. 880 square feet was the cap, but that's, yeah, that's correct.
I thought you just said that there was a 50% max.
There's a 50% lot coverage requirement in the residential zones of the city. And that certainly plays into limiting these things. So if somebody wanted to go over that, we wouldn't let them do that.
And that's 50% of coverage from structures.
From structures, right. So if they had a house and a detached garage, and those two together were 50%, and they came in for an ADU, we would simply deny the ADU and say, you can't. You don't have the room, the capacity.
What if they wanted to convert the garage into an ADU?
Oh, then they could do something like that, or the attic, or the basement, sure. Yeah, they would have options there, but they couldn't build more structure. But that would be the same if they came in for an accessory structure or something else. We'd still tell them no because they were exceeding or right at the limit of what they could build.
Councillor Webb.
Yeah, and hearing this coverage rule, that kinda helps modify how big they're gonna be able to go. So I think that 33%, if somebody had a pretty big, you know, two or three lots, and they only had a thousand square foot house and wanted to build an ADU, they're limited to a third of that. Or a cap of the 880, whatever it was, that kinda fouled them. So I think the combination of the 50% lot coverage actually is kinda the determinant that's gonna limit the size of the house. So I think we're in a good spot right here.
Unless they go up to 35 feet.
Unless they go up to 35 feet.
Yeah, I think that's our height limit, so.
45 feet.
I think it's 35.
It's 35. Rick's remembering it based on the slope in someone's house, the 45 from the ground, Matt.
Gotcha.
Okay, sorry. Councillor Williams.
Well, if you stay with under your area requirement, there's no limit. You can add a second story on either structure, as long as you don't exceed that 35 feet. So. I mean, there's wiggle room.
You just saw that across the street from the old historical school. They just added a third story, yeah, and they were still under the height limit, so that was allowed.
So there's wiggle room there to, you know, get more livable square footage without, you know, saying you can't do it.
That's true. That's true. You're right.
Okay, any other discussion or questions on the ADUs? Number 20.
Well, what are we gonna decide on it?
I think it's good how it's presented.
You can get a general consensus from the council? Two. Is Lorna's thumb up? Is that your thumb up, Lorna?
No, because I haven't read all the information on this.
So, let me get this straight. Web, you like it the way, the new changes or the 33% and 880 square feet?
No, the new changes. I think a lot of those new changes are mandated by the state. We don't have a choice.
Well, they are if you accept this over 2,500 population. Which we've already done.
We've already started the program.
No, I understand.
That would be reversing everything out, and that'd be a disaster.
Well, I kinda like it the way we had it, at 33% or 880. But I see your point, and there's still a size limitation. As far as 50% coverage, so.
Some people don't like much yard. Some people just like structure, no grass.
I'm all for taking the hands of government off people, but I'm also, I have to think about the neighbors.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, you know, some people aren't gonna do things, maybe that look cool, or think of their views, or then I worry about them going too high, or, I don't know, so. Then there's the point where if you don't like neighbors, maybe you should leave town, so. But you hate to tell people that. So anyway, I guess I'll shut up about this issue.
Well, I think if you visualize it, JR, it kinda helps. I mean, just think of your own, where your home's at. Could you even have room to build another structure there? See, so it's a mute point. I probably, I couldn't get away with it probably on mine. My folks, though, where they got that big vacant lot right next to them, an ADU there would be appropriate, and it'd just look like another house sitting there. So, and you could build a full-size house there on what they have. So I think it's gonna kinda self-regulate itself with that 50% coverage rule. Didn't know about that before.
Councillor Williams.
Dale, they wouldn't be putting that on the same lot as their present house, so that would be on a second lot. So that.
I don't know how the tax lot is there on that. They've had some changes. I don't know if there's a lot line there or not anymore. But just say, just say it was all one big parcel.
It is all one big parcel.
Okay. Yeah, I think you're right, because we talked about if they wanted to sell it, we'd have to
Yeah.
divide it off, so.
That's good for them.
Well, you got a thumbs up on, for me, on the ADUs, the way it's written.
I like the changes.
So Matt, are there other amendments that you did that you haven't gone over? Because this discussion kinda morphed into its own thing.
There were four real, well, five if you counted the one we just talked about. We didn't change anything on five, but there were four other changes. They asked us to change the alternative sign process. And so now if somebody wants to exceed the sign, instead it comes to the city council rather than the planning commission. The third change that was requested was to take the remonstrance updates and go back to what we had before, and not touch those for now. We're gonna deal with those a little bit later. They're still on the burner, but we're not gonna deal with it now, so I just reverted that back to the original code text. I'm kinda counting down backwards. The second change they requested was to clarify the homeowner sidewalk maintenance. Because the way it was worded previously, it could be misinterpreted to mean only your frontage and not your sideage. And so I've updated the code to make it clear that it's all of your sidewalk. If you live in a corner lot, it's gonna be your corner sidewalk that you have to maintain, too. And then the very first one we had here was clarifying for the accessory structure standards, which we already touched base on a little bit. And those are the only changes that we made based on the direction from city council two weeks ago.
And so you didn't make any changes to the murals section?
None were requested.
Okay, so that's one of the ones that we did make this first group that did one, allow a sign permit. And part of my concern about not having any sort of required permit is that, could, is that leaving a loophole for potential inflammatory murals? And then we've never, because that's the one thing that was concerning about, what stops someone from putting some sort of hate mural?
Nothing. It's a freedom of speech issue. They could put up nudity, too. It would be self-regulating because the person whose wall, they have to get consent from whoever's wall it goes on. And if they put it up on the side of Joe's Bakery, Jack's Bakery, it's not there anymore. But if they put it up on that wall, then they would have to get permission from that property owner. And if they put up something that was hate speech related, that would have negative impacts from that owner. And it would kinda be self-regulating. We were intentionally trying to stay away from any First Amendment arguments that could get us in hot water, so we didn't wanna regulate freedom of speech at all. That's why we said the only time it really deviates is when you include an ad in your mural, and now it becomes an advertisement. Now you need a sign permit.
So we, but we just made El Amigo get one. So why would you not, at minimum, have someone get one?
Well, because then we are saying what's acceptable and what's not, and that puts us in a place to interpret the First Amendment. We were trying to avoid that.
Well, I'm just saying that by getting one, you're just checking it is not advertising. Because if they.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Point in time where they come talk to anyone and even know this is a rule, then what? Then they painted a Coca-Cola bottle, and you're there trying to make them cover it up? That's what I'm saying, and that's what we did with El Amigo is we said, Stephanie, you said you need to fill out this sign permit, and we need to check it's not advertising. And that's what they did. And it wasn't advertising. So that's my only concern, is we're instituting a rule here, but how would anyone know that if there's no permit or communication?
Stephanie.
To clarify, it was not El Amigo that got the permit. It was Dana Roach, as he owns the building.
Oh, okay, sorry. But that's what I mean. The one that went on that building, we asked to check. So we have the permit and the attached art to prove it's not advertising. But how would they know otherwise? Or we'd just be chasing them after the fact?
I think that's the idea, is that if they did some kind of advertising in there, then we'd have to send Eva out to give them a citation, and then we'd contact the artist and the property owner and get that revised.
But couldn't we all not sending staff out in a citation if we just said, turn in your art and show us what you're doing, and we'll make sure it's not an advertisement? I don't know.
We could certainly do that.
Councillor Williams.
If someone was to decide they wanted to paint a mural of Old Town Veronia, and they wanted to include the Chevron sign, would it be advertising if they weren't selling Chevron gasoline?
Yes.
That's still advertising.
Yes.
What if on the other side it said Chevrolet? And what if on the other side it said Safeway?
Advertising for all of those businesses. So like, the perfect example that we used at planning commission, you might recall, was the Coca-Cola bear. You could have it with a polar bear, and he could be holding a bottle, but that bottle could not say anything. So 76 was orange and white, wasn't it?
Well, it could say gas.
No, red, blue, red, white, and blue.
Yeah, it could say gas and automobile sales, yeah.
Brand. Could have an old-timey round thing that just said gas. Because it's not advertising a specific company.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Or you can put it in the coat. There's always ways around it.
Well, I can just see problems with people saying, hey, I'm just representing the historical view of our street. And you say, I can't do it because it's advertising. I'm not advertising. It's a historical painting of our town.
And I don't know if you've seen the one in here in City Hall, the guy did kind of a drawing. And in kind of a neat way, he did outlines of those type of things, but didn't put in the names. So you still recognize it as the street scene, but it's not all these things popping at you.
So clarify this again for me, Josette. In this mural requirement, we will require a permit then?
The current change for the code says that murals are not considered signs and do not require any kind of permit, but must adhere to the following standards. And what I was saying to Matt is, I'd like to have murals be required to get a sign permit only because then we can share with the person doing the mural, hey, this is the standard. And catch them before they paint something they're gonna have to undo. I think we're just gonna tick people off if we don't say, hey, it can't be advertising. I mean, I don't know. That's just my personal opinion, is that if you get the wrong person, they put all this effort and work into a design, and then you tell them what the rules are, they're gonna be mad.
Yeah, I agree. Stephanie.
What if we changed it to, murals are not considered signs, however, they do require a permit to assure that they adhere to the following standards? That'd be good.
I agree.
That's nice.
I agree. Councillor Allen.
Since we're talking about signs, either Josette or Matt, page 194, section B, section A on that one, it says, they've added the word either and one twice on signs. I'd like to know what that means.
Tell me the section one more time?
Page 194, section B.
So it's like the Brunson Building, Matt?
That's what I wanna know, if it's gonna affect the Brunson Building and make them take down signs. Because it says one sign per facade. So what does that mean? There's only one facade.
Right.
Well, we, when the Brunson Building came in with their signs, we thought that there was far too much signage on that building. And so we wanted to be sure that couldn't happen again, and so we revised this to clarify what the hanging signs were. And before, it allowed one per business, I believe.
Yeah, and that's why she's allowed to have all the shingles.
Right.
Because she falls under the code when she actually applied for it.
So how does, clarify for me, and how this is gonna change things?
So you know how they have the big Brunson facade? That's the flat. And the island grill sticks out. And then she's got every business on a shingle.
Right.
The current code says you're allowed to have a huge one flat against the facade, and one for each business, which is what those shingles are. This way, you would have one sign that lists basically what's in the building in the future, not the multiple shingles protruding from the front.
So they'd only have one, they'd only have one sign for all those businesses?
One hanging and one projecting.
Correct.
So they could have a name for the thing, and then a hanging one that shows, unit A is this business, unit B is this business, unit C is this business.
Well, then you'd have to stack them, Josette, and you still have to be eight feet off the ground. So how high would that sign have to be if you were gonna stack a bunch of signs below it?
Well, but the.
That one sign would just be smaller. It would be one sign plaque with several names on it, is the way they could have done it if it were one building that had several tenants.
Yeah. And I don't know, I don't think you have to be for the hanging one. It could hang but not be over the sidewalk, right, Matt?
Hanging signs may have a maximum area of eight feet, eight square feet, it says. Oh, maybe I read that. No, eight foot, a minimum of eight foot clearance from the bottom of the sign to the finished grade is required for projecting signs.
That's for the ones sticking out over the sidewalk. The hanging one could be hanging against the building and go all the way to the ground with her names of businesses.
Yeah, I originally tried to go to the planning commission to remove hanging signs altogether because the owner of the Brunson Building was really using the difference between projecting signs and hanging signs to their advantage to get a lot more signage than we thought they would be allowed to have. But we went with their interpretation and let them have it. And we were here trying to close the loophole, but the planning commission thought that there was still value. And we were here trying to close the loophole, but the planning commission thought that there was still value in allowing hanging signs. And so we, we kept those in for the version you're seeing here before you. And just tried to minimize how many of them they could possibly have.
So now they could have a sign on the wall. And an awning where they could have a sign on the wall and a projecting sign or sign on the wall and a hanging sign. There's still lots of options. It's just not
Oh, yeah.
The multitude like, like the doubling up basically that the Brunson building has.
And we wouldn't go back after the Brunson building. That's been issued. It's a, it's a non-conforming use. It's fine. That, that ship sailed. We're not going to go after them.
Technically they are in violation though. They are supposed to remove one of them.
Well, they're just, they're just supposed to make the island grill sign flat.
That's right. That's right. And they haven't done it yet. And I've written them a couple of letters.
I know.
I personally didn't have a problem with any of it, but I guess some people did.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions for Matt?
Was there one more issue, Matt? You were going to talk about changes or is that it?
I don't believe so. That was all of them.
Okay.
Okay. Is counsel ready to move on? For a motion or decision? Counsel Williams.
I'm ready to move on.
Okay. Counsel Williams.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We adopt ordinance number nine, three, two, and ordinance of the city of Veronia amending title nine. Chapters nine dash zero, one, nine dash zero, two, nine dash zero, four, nine dash zero, five, nine dash zero, six, nine dash zero, nine, nine dash ten and nine dash eleven. Amending the mural language as stated by the city recorder earlier.
Thank you, Counsel Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor are, I'll ask Stephanie to call the roll, please.
Counsel Williams.
Hi.
Counsel Webb.
Hi.
Counsel Allen.
No.
Counsel Potter.
I'm going to abstain.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Motion carried. Would any counselor wish to have this ordinance written full?
No.
Hearing of request, this is the first reading of ordinance number nine, three, two by title only. An ordinance of the city of Veronia amending title nine chapters nine dash zero, one, nine dash zero, two, nine dash zero, four, nine dash zero, five, nine dash zero, six, nine dash zero, nine, nine dash ten and nine dash eleven. This ordinance will come back to the next council meeting for its second reading.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving on to consent agenda for acceptance. Consent agenda for approval. City council work session meeting minutes for April 5th, 2021 can be found on page three through seven. Any discussion or questions on the meeting on April 5th? If not, would anyone like to move to accept the amended meetings for April 5th, 2021? Counsel Webb.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Oh, sorry for interrupting. Counsel Allen.
Hi.
Counsel Williams.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counsel Potter.
Hi.
Counsel Webb.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving into unfinished business. Staff report sidewalk work session.
Okay. So this one's from me. I've been requested to bring you a staff report to have you schedule a work session to discuss the title nine amendments. Staff still needs to get together to put together those amendments. So I'm asking you guys to push that out. You can still schedule it tonight and give us a target if you would like. But I'm looking at the end of May, early June, preferably early June.
Sorry, Stephanie, you're breaking up. Could you say that again one more time at last end?
I'm hoping you guys will schedule the work session for sidewalk title nine amendments for early June.
Why don't we do it Wednesday?
What Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Cause we don't have it started.
She doesn't have it ready yet.
Oh.
I'm probably going to be gone about June 6th on for week and a half.
About the 14th. Oh, sorry. That'd only be a week.
So our first budget meeting's on the 27th, correct? And that's a really, that's a really light meeting. That first one, right? Hand out the books. Pick a, pick a president or whatever you call it and move on.
But we will have the, the changes prepared. So you guys had decided to rip off the Band-Aid. Right?
Yeah.
And those other things. So we probably wouldn't have them ready by next Wednesday. But sometime following that is just going to be what you guys can handle with your meeting scheduling. So the week of the 11th, you just have a, of May 11th, you have one meeting for budget. And the week of the 25th. And then we're into June. So if it's one of those weeks, staff could probably hit the mark, but.
Well, Matt won't be here.
And we need, but his counterpart would be here. I mean, we're just asking for, my concern is, is that the further we get away from what we talked about, the less everybody remembers it is why I'm thinking sometime in May. Matt, you do our work with you in the next, before you go, you leave the first week of May, right?
That's correct.
Cause it's not, I mean, it's just going to be requiring that they put in all the stuff. So it's not a ton of tweaks.
Yeah, I've got two more Thursdays out there before I leave. So we should be able to try and get something on paper before then.
Well, it's 29th.
That's, but that's the first day Matt's going to be back out here. Right? Or are you here this Thursday?
I, I'm here this coming Thursday, and I'm also going to be here the last week of April on Thursday, the 29th.
It would have to be early though, because we have a public hearing that day.
Right. Right. But if the goal is just to get some text written. I can certainly get that done before I leave and then I could have somebody else present it or Josette, you could present the text we came up with. While I'm gone, I get back on the week of the 24th. And so if you wanted me to be in Veronia on the week of the 24th, that could be possible. I mean, I'll be here on Thursday, the 27th of May. This is my standard day in Veronia.
So we could do it, we could. What is counsel's availability? I guess is our real question. It's got to be before June or you lose. Counsel Webb, what did you say, Counsel Williams?
I have, I have to work on the 29th. I've got a bus trip.
Okay.
27th, 27th of May is good for me, Thursday.
Works for me.
Are you talking April and May?
May.
I'll be out of town.
I'm good in May. I'm good in May.
You'll be out of town, JR? Okay.
So why don't, why doesn't staff try to do it and do it like Thursday, the 13th of May? And then you guys can yay or nay the parts. And then when Matt gets back two weeks after that, he could tweak it or we could bring it to you for a formal adoption or whatever. Is everybody available the 13th?
Yeah.
What day is that?
Say that again, Steph?
You do Monday, the 10th. That's the normal council day.
Yeah, it could be any day once we get it prepped. I just know some people don't like the back-to-back meeting. Yeah, on the Tuesday.
13th works for me. Does it work for you, JR?
Do we need a workshop or do we just need a presentation of what we're going to approve?
Well, that's what it would be. It would be basically what do you got? You'd have to look it over and say, yeah. And then, then the reason I'm kind of pushing it to get past you guys is because then Matt has to do public notice to Division of, or
DLCD, 35 days. That's right. You got it.
So then it starts this slow clock where we have to publicly, once you guys decide what you want.
We have to go to planning commission first and then bring it to city council. It's going to be a little while. Once we go for an actual hearing. That's right. I think Josette wanted us to bring it to you folks in a workshop form first, just so you could tentatively bless it. And then we can start the rigmarole of going through the hearing process to get it adopted.
Right.
So it could, it could come regular council meeting on the 10th.
On the third?
The 10th. Oh, sorry. The 17th, like you said.
Yeah.
Or the third.
Yeah. I mean, if, if Matt and I get it done, we could get your blessing on the third and then planning commission, we can just push it to planning and they can start the process.
The only thing is you guys can't harass me if the packet comes out on the 29th because I would have to wait for him to get, for all of us to get it done. So when the packet's a day late, I don't get my hands slapped.
Why don't we say the third and then if it has to, we push to 17th?
Yeah, I think we can get it for the third. It's just one section. That, and I think you all were pretty clear on what you wanted, so. Okay. So our, our aim will be that you'll see it on the third.
Sounds good.
And your packet will be ready Friday, the 30th.
Weekend homework.
I'll read it online.
I'll remind you.
It's special for you.
I'll remind you next Monday, Josette.
Okay.
Okay, moving to new business. Waiver remonstrance request from Mr. Purdue.
There's like three or four more, isn't there?
At least four. Four applications.
Is this the gentleman that's building all the houses up there that we were looking at?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So what is the advantage of him? He's probably heard that we're thinking about this. What's the advantage of him getting this? Versus if the change is made, then what? The homeowner's got to put it in a week later?
Well, he, they wouldn't have to until you formed a local improvement district. And then they would have to be following the code that was in place when they applied for their permit. And they're right there.
I, I don't know if we really can deny it, but in my own mind, I'm ready to just to stop doing it. But I'd like to hear from everybody on that one.
Yeah, I agree. We don't have a choice. We're just going to have to make a decision. Move forward. I think we just adopted in this title nine. I don't think they come to us after we get this adopted, so.
Well, that's why I was pushing for us to get the changes you wanted in the process. Cause otherwise you, you have this big open gap until you adopt some, some change of being forced to accept them basically, if they meet the criteria.
And this is just a great reminder of we're not getting, got to get it done whenever we decide.
Well, those are my feelings also. I, I, I think we've we're, we're really close to the point where we won't have to deal with them anymore. And, but I think in light of our present situation, we're not quite there. We're almost there. We pretty much have to honor these waivers, I think. That's my personal opinion. So. Any other comments on this? From any other counselors? Would anyone like to make a motion? To accept these applications of waiver of monsters?
Do we have to spell them all out separately here?
You could just make a motion to approve the waiver request for and then state the addresses.
I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver of remonstrances for Mr. Andy Purdue at the address of 174 East G Street. And 115 East H Street. And 143 East H Street. And 157 East H Street.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Is there a second to that? Motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counsel Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie? Bless you, Stephanie.
Counsel Potter.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counsel Williams.
Hi.
Counsel Webb.
All right.
Counsel Allen.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, moving into letter B of new business. Finally, Mr. Calhoun's peace tree discussion. Welcome, Michael.
Hey, everyone.
Any other, any questions for Mr. Calhoun on the peace tree?
There was something in here. I forgot it now. I read it that we asked Michael to bring back some information for us. Do you remember what that was, Mike?
Yeah, you asked if it would be, would it thrive in Veronia's climate? So I did reach out to the forester and he had a chart in front of him and he said that this tree can survive in zone one through nine. And on his chart, Veronia was a zone six. So it, it should do just fine. The only place he mentioned that it wouldn't live in Oregon would be like on Mount Hood. Kind of like, like a snow alpine area. It's not suitable for that. But, but Veronia, Scapuce, Rainier, that this area would be acceptable.
And one more question I had is, say we go ahead and plant this tree and it goes through parks and they find a place for it. Who's going to take care of the tree to get it up to, you know, a year or two old where it's not going to die?
That was what we needed to sort out. And that's what the forester, that was like the main requirement was making sure that someone could water it. I don't have experience with watering trees downtown, but I could look into that. I wasn't sure if, if it was one of the newer trees, would it be kind of absorbed into the new trees that are also already being watered? They get those little water sacks around them. So that's something to, I, I guess, sort out the nitty gritty details.
Well, that's just it. We don't know where we're going to plant it as far as the smell, because we don't know if it's going to be a female versus a male. So I kind of tend on thinking maybe it should be, if we do decide to plant it. if we do decide to plant it, it should probably be out away from the downtown street, maybe a little ways from a faucet. And so it's gonna take someone keeping track of it that doesn't mind probably packing some water. But maybe, maybe the Parks Department's a good one to go through for, if council decides, change their mind on this, to go through a placement recommendation.
Counselor Potter?
Well, I've done my homework on this because I love trees, and I love trees that do well in Veronia. And like I had stated before, when this subject came up before, this is not a good tree for Veronia, and I'm standing by it. And the reason that I am is because it takes twenty years or more for the ginkgo to even begin to think about maturing. And they're a very extremely slow-growing tree for several years. Now, my sources didn't say what number several years is, but I'm, I'm guessing at least five years. I have a, I have a one-foot tree here. This is, happens to be a cedar. You might not be able to see all of it. Most of you have seen a one-foot tree. Okay, they're, they're delicate. They're hard to get going the first several years. They take a lot of water. Someone has to be diligent about watering them, especially the ginkgo. They have to be well-watered. They cannot stand dry soil. They have to have well-drained soil. This is just some of the information that I got off the web. They also, uh, there's a lot of things against the ginkgo. So I'm gonna give you the bad, and then what I see is the good. We, there is no re, no research on the relationship of a ginkgo tree to what other, uh, it's a relationship of ginkgo to other plants and how they react to other species of ginkgo. They need to be fertilized in the spring until they're mature. The male ginkgo is high, highly allergenic. On the allergy scale, its rating is, uh, seven out of ten. That's high. The female tree is only two on the allergy scale. You have a fifty percent chance of getting either a male or a female. No way that they can tell. Another thing about the ginkgo is the nuts that are on there are very, very toxic. You can bake them, you can boil them, but if they were picked up off of the ground, they're very toxic, and they do not recommend that you do anything with them except, uh, clean up after them. And it, in my resource, it said that the cleaning up after the female ginkgo trees is a high maintenance task. So I'm, uh, they also need sandy, well-drained soil or sandy loam. Well, Spencer Park has a lot of fill in there, because it dipped in, in the middle when the school was there, and so it has a lot of crappy fill in there. So where is the sandy loam, and where is the well-drained soil? Most of it, soil around the Veronia area is clay or hard pan, not the best of soil, unless you live out Keyzey Road. And so, uh, also, the pH has to be five to eight on the pH scale. So I'm just saying, who's gonna take care of all of this? Who's gonna do the fertilizing if it needs to be well-watered? Who's gonna do this? Who's gonna build the little fence around it? A one-foot tree is gonna get trampled. The good thing about the ginkgo is that they have pretty leaves. They're deciduous. The leaves turn yellow in the fall. And the, the leaves are kind of a fan-shaped. They're kind of a rubbery, shiny feeling. That's all it has to offer. And I appreciate the history of the ginkgo and where it's coming from and everything like that. But I don't believe that is a, a smart enough reason for how much work a one-foot ginkgo is going to be. I, I just see that that's a lot of extra work for our parks or our maintenance man. And to find the perfect spot, it takes part shade or, or sun. Anyway, that's, that's what I've come up with, the ginkgo. In a small, miniature garden, they look great. You can keep them manicured and keep them small, but that's not the case here with, with this situation. So I say, nix it. Thank you.
Michael, I've got a question for you. You're not too far away from graduating from Veronia, but do they have outdoor school and outdoor classes that, um, outdoor school that take field trips down by the Mill Pond and in the Wetlands area? To me, that would be a good place to plant it down in there and have lots of moisture and be kind of out of the way and, 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 um, kind of a study tree. Just a thought. Go ahead, JR.
I, I think Counselor Potter was saying it needs a sandy loam-type soil that drains. That swamp would probably root rot it and kill it. I, I, that's what I'm afraid of in that, in that wetland area. So, um...
Yeah, I don't know.
We don't have too much sandy area.
Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
Yeah, you know, this tree is kind of a, well, you know, it's, it's an honor to have it. So it's not something you just wanna tuck out of sight. Yeah, I, I think the challenge is, for Michael, find us a spot that makes sense, kind of meets some of these criteria. We're probably gonna need somebody to champion this tree a little more and take care of it for, you know, first five, ten years of its life, get some commitment there. We keep laying this on the, our public work staff, and they get stretched pretty thin, and then it's liable not to get watered or something, and then we lose it, and then that's an embarrassment, so. I mean, I applaud your effort to bring this forward to us, but I think we're gonna have to see some commitment and find that ideal spot. I think that's gonna be the key. Where can we put it? People can get away from the smell if it's a female eventually. Twenty years from now, none of us will even remember this discussion, probably, to go, who planted that? That's where I'm at on it. I think, what, what's our window of time left on this, Michael, to get it?
Well, there, there's still five trees that are available, and they'll, they'll be there until they're either picked by another community. So, so that's, that's kind of the timeframe right now.
Yeah, I'd, I'd kind of say, go to the Parks Committee meeting, see where they're at on it. Try to see if we can get some, somebody that's gonna be dedicated to, you know, maybe if you get Whitman, you know, he's, he's, he loves them trees. He takes care of them down there, but really need to think out where we need to put it, so. And, and the soil type there. Can it take a flood? That'd be a big question.
Anybody else on the tree?
Yeah, I think, I think, and right along the lines of Counselor Webb, Mike, we don't wanna take the honor and then not do it justice, or have it not survive. And I wasn't really thinking of the flood until Counselor Webb brought that up, which may or may not happen, happen eventually, but, um... So, you know, where's it gonna be where people can see it and know it's there versus where it might survive? So that's kind of the big one there. Unless City Hall wants it in front of their lawn or something.
I, one option.
Might not flood there, or the library or something, you know? But then you got the smell, which is a maybe, maybe, but probably doesn't smell worse than the lagoons, but... So I don't know, you know, we gotta draw you into town. It maybe has better drainage. And if we can find a place that's, that doesn't necessarily have to have a park, but then you're looking at private property or city property other than a park, but... So I'm, I'm not against giving it a shot, but I think you got some things to work out, probably with, maybe the Parks Department can help come up with an idea. Maybe Josette can help you. I don't know what the best way to go about it, but I'm not, I'm not against it a hundred percent. I think you got some challenges ahead of you. But you've been here twice, so it tells me you're still at it, so.
One option that was brought up was if possibly, uh, it could be at the school grounds. And then that wouldn't be technically city, so that is another option that, that was brought up. I could reach out to them, too. And so that, that may be an avenue to take.
And they got a lot of clay up there, so it might be, you have to dig out and add some sandy loam and a big, you know, with a, with an excavator or something to give it a chance. So something to think about there, too, so. That, the school might be a good option. It's up on the hill.
Counselor Potter?
We just need to remember that the ginkgo seeds are extremely toxic. So to plant that near a school or where there's a lot of foot traffic, that's just, uh, very, very dangerous. And that they should not be eaten because they are so toxic. And the other health problem with them is they're highly allergenic, especially the male tree. It's very high on the scale of allergy levels. So, you know, it has two huge strikes against it there. And I think it would be a huge liability to plant a toxic poison seed tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Williams, you had your hand up.
Well, I was thinking about the, the odor that the tree produces. Is it something that just spreads out and blankets and lingers? Is it something that is like for a week out of the year? I mean, does it, does it really make people sick, or is it just something you go, phew, I don't like that? I mean, I, I'd like a little more explanation about the smell.
Okay.
I think Jana was on here for...
Yeah, real quick, Jana. I want to, want the meeting to move along, so.
Step, oh, there it is.
I'd like to voice my support for this project. I think of the incredible honor that it is to have one of these pease trees. And I happened to listen to an OPB presentation this weekend on the horrors that people in Hiroshima experienced. And it is just such a living way to remember what has happened and connect with our history. And I'm on a website that shows how many cities in Oregon have planted a tree. It's too many to even go over. I don't see that there's any problems reported. I think that if you gathered the seeds, I, I hear the concern about toxicity. I think if you gathered the seeds perfect with, with a purpose and, and ground them or ate them, there may be some problem. I don't know of any reported incidents where anyone around a tree has picked up a pod and had difficulty. And I just, I think it would be a real cultural and spiritual addition to the community. And I believe, I know personally that we do have organizations that are interested in sponsoring and taking care of it to make sure through its vulnerable years, that it would be cared for. So I, I would just like to say, I think it's great.
Thank you, Jana. And maybe if Michael takes it to Parks, you could have further discussion about that, so. Sounds like the issue is not dying, and may continue with further discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Business from the departments. Chief Connor, you're there?
I am here. I apologize. I don't have an official written report for you guys tonight, but I wanted to give you some numbers anyway. Our numbers for March ended with a hundred and forty-seven calls for service, and they wrote thirty-five new code violations. I've been pretty tied up with some other administrative duties and patrol work, so I will add my numbers to my next report. That is all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, Chief, can you give us an update on staff status? Are we up to fulls, or are we with three, four?
Well, we have four of us currently working and one still out on medical.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
And Grant, I wanted to let you know I'm still looking at the numbers from the Oregon State Police for Highway forty-seven. I've been directed to contact the North Plains Office for those, so I haven't gotten ahold of anybody there yet, but maybe by the next meeting, I'll have some numbers for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for keeping us safe, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. A resolution clarifying the authority of the city administrator to execute documents related to the current and all future community development block grants projects.
A, a new kind of hoop that we're requested to jump through for CDBG. Now that you guys authorize that we're gonna apply for one, but they added this new one, that they want a resolution authorizing me signing the documents that are connected to it. So it's a little bit different. We haven't had to do this before, but they requested it for us to work, move forward on the springboard, ask for CDBGs, so that's what we're doing.
Any questions?
Yeah, I had a hard time hearing that speaker come through. Josette, who asked for it?
CDBG, this is a new, they republish their grant management handbook every couple of years. And we've always had to have a resolution that tells the, the city saying they're going to apply or asking, asking you to apply on their behalf. But they added this new one that they wanted a resolution that gave me the authority to execute the documents that are part of the grant. So you're still gonna have, each time we apply, you're still gonna have to give permission to apply. This is just a new boot they wanted us to jump through in formalizing that I'm authorized to execute the document.
And it used to be the mayor or something?
No, it was always me. They're just now saying you have to get a resolution saying... No, it was always me. They're just now saying you have to get a resolution saying your council says you can sign.
They're just making it official.
So in the past, I think the last mayor that signed one was Randy for the Rose Avenue project way back when. But ever since then, we haven't had mayors sign it. Because sometimes you got to sign something, scan it, send it back. And I think they just wanted to firm up who could sign. So it can either be the mayor if that's who wants to sign it. Or in the short term, it can be me if I have to to get it turned around quickly.
Anyone like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021 dash 08? Counselor Williams.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2021 dash 08.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Potter. Would you call her, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor Williams?
Hi.
Counselor Potter?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. One more resolution this evening. 2021 dash 09, a resolution adopting reserve fund policy. Pages 14 through 21.
So this is the reserve funds policy that council, the last budget committee, and then in our discussions after budget with council, wanted, developed so that the future people in our different perspective positions follow the criteria we wanted laid out for reserve funds. So Andy put it into a policy and we thought we would bring it to you guys to get it adopted. That going into budget, we have kind of a framework when we're thinking about setting funds to go into reserve and what the marks are to hit and when we stop collecting money for reserves.
Counselor Webb.
So, was I mistaken when we had our workshop that we adopted? Basically, or we had consensus around? And I had a discussion with Stephanie on this today, and I think that's a something that happens to us when we can see each other and we do a thumbs up and there's not a verbal. I had a feeling that we had consensus that we were actually putting dollar amounts into like the water operating and facility reserves. We had timelines. We had a five-year on operating reserve at a certain rate. The facility reserve was a little more vague. We didn't really sit down, but there was discussion around it. And there was verbiage of how much money we wanted to put in there. And then plus Angie confirmed this is a similar amount of money she is putting in the current budget. I think some of the goal on this was basically to kind of firm that up. And so that part of it really isn't a budget discussion at that point. We've set the policy of how much reserve we want to, you know, we want to go into each one of these funds. Especially on the water and sewer where we're actually embedding this into the rates. It's kind of a mute question. We're raising those revenues. They should be going into those funds. So I wanted to hear what the other council, I just thought we had a consensus on moving forward, putting a set dollar amount. The surplus money is never determined until the end of the budget year because she does that estimate of where she thinks she's going to land. And then there's always a difference. So that's the surplus part of it that would be the following, would be the following year, maybe the discussion on it, but.
So I'm not following. You're right in that the money and the amount of money really happens outside. This was just so that the future people would know we're going to aim to get six months in that fund and not exceed nine months. So I guess I'm not following with, you wouldn't put actual money numbers in a policy like this because this is more the goal, not exactly what's going in there each year. Am I misunderstanding what you're, what's wrong with having the goal identified and adopted?
And the goals are fine. The goal was fine. But when we were setting those goals, we were saying in adoption of that, the part of the goal was we wanted to try to get the operating funds in the next five years. We, I think we had consensus there. So basically then it was just amortized to get that amount in the next five years. And Angie had that number. She gave us, we had numbers that we set for each one of these in the operating was specific. And I just think it makes it easier for staff going into budget every year. She knows her number. We don't have to, oh, well, what was it? Because if you look in the past, our numbers have been all over the map because we've decided that number after the fact. And now we're changing it. We're putting it in now. We're going to collect it. And that should just be an automatic. It goes into the reserve funds automatically. It's really not a discussion for the budget committee even at that point.
No, and that's fine. This is, but I think that's two separate things. I think you don't want staff to, or future staff to just continue to bankroll money and bankroll money. You wanted limits on all these things, right?
Correct, which is in her verbiage, you know, in the operating, we're shooting for the six months, nine month max. So that's the regulation process on that. The facilities have the $2 million max, so that's the limit on that. But, but I, you know, that there was another part of that, like I said, the discussion, we wanted, trying to shoot for five years to get those operating reserves. And that was the amount of money we wanted to put in there to get that goal.
Right.
So.
But I don't know that that five year, this is, I don't think Angie thinks this is the place for the five-year statement. That's more on the cover page of your operating that in 2021, the goal is, you know, or somewhere outside of this, because this is just telling us limits and maxes to drive staff in the future.
So could we do a appendix B? And is basically the rate schedule for achieving these goals? Because see, you're setting, I mean, I would think we're setting a policy. If we're setting so much aside every year, that's a policy decision by the council. And it just documents it. She doesn't have to try to remember what she did. I mean, really, it should be easy from here on. She should be putting in that certain number and it'll be that same number till we reach the goal. Or she's got a four-year review process, which actually I do like because that's actually a year before we think we're going to hit our operating limits and we're going to review again. That would be kind of the year that maybe we could tweak, polish it, come in on the five-year mark or whatever. But, but I'd still like to see those dollar amounts somewhere. There's a schedule of the payment that we're going to make to ourselves just for, it's kind of institutionalized.
So I wonder if it's not better served to have her do a payment sheet similar to how we have the loan payment schedules? And just do our own reserves payment schedule that shows what the future us are going to do and keep it. My only concern is if we attach it to a resolution and then change it in any way, and Stephanie can tell me if this is right, we would just have a new resolution. Right? You can't, you're getting away from amending on a resolution, right?
Um, yeah, I just, I like to repeal them and make them a new document.
But that's why I'm thinking this is the current goal. It could always be repealed and reset. And outside of it could exist your, the five-year plan of the reserves payment schedule or something. So that you're not having to go back and tweak it because that reserves payment schedule, depending on if something happens and you lose customers, you have to use some of it. It's never, it's not potentially going to be five years without some variation or some event that causes you to have to go five and three quarters years or get it all. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, personally, I think that was kind of a given that we're not going to hit it just perfectly exact. But, you know, and then like I say, that review process in four years out kind of gives us some flexibility there to make a last-minute change, last year's change. I just, I know for myself, I can't remember something from one week to the next, so I really need it on a document somewhere that, and, you know, hey, maybe they vote us all out next election and, and you got a new council and if it's, you know, you're going to go through this process again or maybe it just changes, I would hope staff would have the commitment to just vote, you know, continue on. I mean, this is, this is our goal. Yeah, I didn't see in here where we said those operating reserves, we were trying to make that in five years. But that was part of it. It'd be interesting, what does everybody else remember on that discussion?
I think you're right, Dale. There were some numbers. I'd have to go back and listen to that tape to hear it. But I'm not sure if I remember five years to get to the water or the sewer, six to nine months operating budget. I'm trying to think what it takes to operate, probably 100,000 a month or something. So, you know, I'm not sure what that number would be to plug in each year. But I know we talked about 2% for the general fund. I think we just called it a 2% because the general fund going up and down a lot, but. Yeah. And then I did have a little bit of concern since the staff identifies appropriate use, finance director, city administrator, department head. Would that still come to council then, depending on who the council is or who the staff is at the time for spending out of these reserves?
Yeah, so we, if it's not an identified thing in the budget, it has to come to council. So if we were pulling money out or if we're using 10% of money within a fund that isn't already earmarked, we have to talk to you.
Well, on that note, when we do these amendments to the budget, like just recently, none of that stuff came to council first. The money was spent and then it come to council.
You mean the supplemental?
Yeah.
Yeah, so those are just because we, if we, if we have any extra income that goes out for an expense, like the cares money or anything like that, that has to go through a supplemental, otherwise you get a finding. Are you meaning like the, if it's, if it's something that was in the budget that overran and costs more, you still would have to do a supplemental, but it would already have been in the budget. It wasn't like we went out and bought new, you know, paint for City Hall without it being in the budget already. It could be that paint costs more and so you have to do a supplemental to acknowledge that expense overage. So those are, all those things in the supplemental were either CARES Act funding or things that were already in the budget, but either money came in and we spent it out, like CARES funding, or it was in the budget and it was over the price we estimated in the budget.
Or something happened that needed repaired.
Right, and it took like operations and maintenance or building supplies or something over the normal number that we had, yeah.
Counselor Webb.
Yeah, I had a discussion, well, actually Angie called me to come down and talk to her. And I think this is a classic example of what Chair is talking about. And it's actually a very good example of why we're setting up these reserves and how we've got them set up to work through. Water this year had quite a few additional expenses, unexpected expenses. And so she was calling me up, was pretty concerned when they ran preliminary run on the rate calculator because we didn't do a lot of carryover because we expensed out more than we planned. And so anyhow, you know, I think we're still a little bit in a learning curve on staff to remember, because I brought up, I said, well, shouldn't we have put some of, we should have built that against the facility reserve. You know, if those are one-off events, those should be coming out of there. And then we would have had our carryover. We wouldn't see, be seeing the water rate making this jump. That's the smoothing mechanism. Plus then it would be coming in front of council, which is, you know, we definitely okay it. They're all legitimate expenses. But then that's also reinforces why I'm really advocating putting extra money in the facilities because that is where we're going to spend this extra money. So I think we're getting there. I think that was kind of a lesson learned this year. I don't know, did, did, did she? Because we didn't see that come across to us, or is she going to do that yet? She said she could still put some of that, take some of that from the facility reserve, bill that against it. But then that would need to come to us for the okay to do that. And I was hoping to see that. I don't know if that was in that supplemental. I don't think it was.
No, I don't think so.
But you think she's still going to try to do that? Because she seemed to think that was a good idea when, once I mentioned it, but.
So honestly, Dale, I haven't been in the office for personal things the last two days and tomorrow. So I'd have to ask Angie. I wouldn't want to guess at what she.
Yeah, and I can talk to her. I came in today. She wasn't there. I know you got some things going on, so that's fine. I just, like I said, it was a classic example of exactly why we're setting this up the way we are. I think once we get it working that way, it's really going to help all the way around. Because she was pretty concerned about what the rate was going to do. And of course, we pretty much have an offset in the sewer, it looks like. So it's going to be a mute point, but we can maybe, you know, and this is all preliminary. So once we get into the budget discussion and things might change there. So, yeah, I just, I don't know how we want to do it. I can talk to Angie. You can. I just, I'd kind of like to see that document. I went through that work session and dug out the numbers again. The operating reserves were very plain of the, I mean, she told us the number that she needed to make that work in five years. I've got them written down. We also for the general fund, she had a seven-year plan. That was 24K a year that we were going to put in the reserve to make that work. So the only one that was, the only one that was a little bit sketchy was the facility reserves. I mentioned 29 grand a year in each one. And she, that's what she's using in this year's budget is 29 grand, is what she told me the other day. So we probably need to reach consensus on that and nail down these numbers. And I don't know if she'd want to make an appendix B and put out the different ones, the different funds, the five-year plan. And then the facility, I know on the facility she was talking, we're going to between 30 and 35 years if we're collecting close to 60,000 a year because of the surplus money going there, so.
So you guys don't have to pass this tonight. We can bring it back on the third and have Angie come and maybe propose whatever it is you want to see in some sort of schedule. And it probably won't be an issue because the, we were trying to do it ahead of budget. So we wouldn't have to have these discussions in budget with the budget committee that council's kind of will would be set in place and. and, and could be explained to the budget committee members, but it would be kind of up for playing, so to speak. It's why we're trying to get it done. But that first meeting is, we all know, it's kind of, that we can bring it back on the third with Ann and just have a more detailed, maybe adopt something at that point. So if you want to give this for more information, so that Stephanie can have it be appropriate, then do that.
When I talked to Angie the other day, she suggested doing that. She said, this is just a draft, so if you guys want to make some changes, do them.
Yeah. JR, do you have something to say?
I just wanted to, I agree with Counsel Webb. I think it's easier for everybody, including our budget officer, if there's hard numbers on paper, because you build that into the price of admission, kind of so to speak, right? So if you don't have the number hard, you're like, well, we're not put that in this year. We're not, we don't have it. Well, it's plugged in, you know, that's cost of business and, and we're just, then we'll get, we'll have that every year.
Right.
I agree with Counsel Webb is wanting some hard numbers in front of us. I mean, there's always exception to the rule if something tragic happens, but things are going good. I don't know why we couldn't determine amount that goes into each fund for a reserve.
No, and I'm happy to do that. My only thing is that say we determine that number and then we go and use it like Dale's saying, to backfill the over expenditures in the water fund. That then, would you propose you, you stick to the number in hand or you up it what you took out? To see why a set number, there has to be some understanding of, say, we were going to put 50,000 in there and in this fiscal year, we had to use 10 of it. So are we putting 60 in the next year or 50? So that's kind of another discussion with us putting a list of numbers. What's council's direction on that kind of scenario? So that maybe that could also, so be thinking about that. So that when we come to finalize this, we get something that staff understands what they're doing and council understands that if the number goes up by 10,000, it's because we used it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I don't know if you worry about a small amount, but maybe if all of a sudden you had to take a big chunk out of it, then you got to look at maybe replacing it a little faster in the next two or three years, but you know, if you had 150,000 in facilities reserve for water and you had to use 15,000 of it for something, I don't know if that's worth adjusting everything the next year, but if you had to take 60,000 out of that, then you might have to probably look at that, so.
So yeah, maybe be thinking, maybe there's a threshold we hit where it triggers us putting back what we took or if it's under that threshold, then it's just the scheduled payment or something. Because I don't want to get into it where staff understands it one way different than council, because I think that down the line could get problematic if we're not on the same page.
Well, your facility reserves, there should be a certain amount that you plan on expenditure, spending, expenditure every year, correct?
No.
So you don't have a facility reserve thinking, I'm going to use 20,000 of that probably for building maintenance each year?
No, so that would be in the actual fund. Um, the specific water or sewer fund and then
Your operations.
The big project is where we talked about tracking big, not regular maintenance, but big projects. Is how I understand it. So a roof, a brand-new $50,000 pump, you know.
Right. Well, we all know we're not going to get there unless we pay ourselves first, just like any personal finance. So you got to figure a way to pay yourself first and try to stick to it. And I think Counsel Webb's dead right that if you don't pay yourself first, you won't build it into the price of, of business. And then you're going to come up short each year at the end, wishing, wishing you could have put that in there instead of, no, we're putting it in there first and, and this is the money it's going to take to operate on top of that.
Oh, no, I'm not, we're all on the same page about writing it into the budget. I'm just talking when we put up this repayment schedule, I, I want you guys to be thinking about clarification. If there's expenditures that hit a certain percentage, what's your direction to staff for the next budget schedule with that number? Is it just that number is listed or is it repaying even the more that we spent or, you know? That's kind of what I'm thinking, long-term.
Right.
So we got to hold two weeks to think about it.
Counsel Webb.
Yeah, and I think some of this is, we're going to have to establish kind of a track record, you know, of how much we are using out of there. I don't know, we can really, I don't think past history right now, we have a good handle on that. So, you know, I think the next four years, unless we're really eating it up every year, I mean, it's going to be noticeable right off. But like you say, we might eat some of it up this year and next year we don't use any. And so I think when we review it, or whoever reviews it in four years, then you make that adjustment. I mean, the facility reserve is such a long-term commitment, you know. I don't know if we can be making judgments from a year or two's data and be very effective, so. This is my thought. I don't know. Did we want to put some numbers in here for Angie to work with or how are we going to, how are we going to determine that? I mean, I gleaned from the work session. I went back and gleaned the numbers out of it.
I'm thinking for ease of, if council's okay with it, maybe you come and have it sit down with Angie and I with the numbers you gleaned out of the work session and we propose that schedule to the whole council on the third.
Sounds good. Sounds all right.
I was just thinking, you know, we, we talked about the changing of the guard over the years and we actually had this workshop with our old council last fall. Talked about these numbers and now we have two new council members and, and trying to get everyone back up to snuff and, and up to speed and. So I, I think we could have a little bit more work done, presented to us and and get a better idea what we, how we want to move ahead. Oh, we're ready to move on?
Can you formally table this for me?
Okay.
For the next meeting?
Would anyone like to make a motion to table this resolution? Counsel Webb.
Yeah, I'll move the table, Resolution 2021-09. A resolution adopting a reserve fund policy to the next scheduled council meeting.
Counsel Williams.
That's the second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counsel Webb.
Hi.
Counsel Williams.
Hi.
Counsel Allen.
Hi.
Counsel Potter.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there any correspondence tonight?
Nope.
Okay. City Administrator Report.
So I apologize, I don't have a huge written report for tonight. Life's interesting. Um, we did get all the trees delivered for the Phase Three Spencer Park trees. We have all the plaques installed for the memorial plaques as of today. Um, we don't have any more on order yet. But citizens can still do that. Um, and then we have 10 six-to-seven-foot western red cedars for Aura. So those are going to be planted and then we're just waiting for final kind of approval of the signs from the CZ Trail Committee. They're finalizing all the, the different wayfinding signs, so they're still be in production. So we have all the boards for the parking area, the trailhead parking area, but we're not going to put them up until the signs are ready because we don't want to have kind of a graffiti attraction to bear wood in the middle of town. Um, other than that, we're just working on the CDVG application. I did testify at the Ways and Means for the Louisiana North-South Connection. I got word from Representative Witt's office that that was one of the projects he was going to pitch into the use of the American Recovery Plan Act. And so I submitted written testimony and then I testified via Zoom meeting to the Ways and Means Commission. And interesting, there was a lot of kind of big players asking for big money, like, hey, we're the community colleges, give us $35 million. And then there was a lot of small players asking, um, so my testimony really spoke to using that one-time opportunity to fund rural community infrastructure that they would otherwise not be able to put in place without an opportunity such as this. And Platsk and I came and asked for infrastructure money and so did Scappus. So Brunnonia, Scappus, and Platsk and I were the Columbia County contingent, asking for small amounts of money for help in rural communities in Oregon. So we'll find out when they, they, ours was the first region that they were hearing from. And then they were going to hear from the different regions throughout the state on different public hearing night. And so then they'll determine they have $708 million that's available out of the American Recovery Plan Act that the state is not using for their own state function, that the representatives and senators were allowed to pitch different ideas. And so we're going to be speaking on the actual floor of the House on behalf of the Columbia County projects that we pitched. So hopefully we get our money and we can pull off the Louisiana North-South Connection. Um, we're moving forward on Platsk up. We still have to get the logs yarded to the neighbor's property. Um, but Robert, Jeff had gone up there with Robert Watts about some excavation for the pipe size and getting that sewer connected. And we're almost finalized with the engineering for the ADA ramps on River Street that were part of the holdup from the SCA grant. We put in ADA ramps and they're forcing us to have a ramp running parallel with the highway and a ramp going perpendicular into the highway, even though there's not a crosswalk there. So we're going with it. We're going to install those so it doesn't hold up our paving money. And then I did get, um, I have been taking into account things that different councils been talking to me about, about putting in the budget. So I did get your, your lake crack sealing idea and got a price for that to potentially put, get some material so we could seal the cracks around the Brunnonia Lake in the next fiscal year. So that's kind of what we have going on, just a lot of balls in the air and trying to juggle. You guys have any questions for me or things that you want staff to pay attention to or clarify?
Counsel Webb.
Yeah, thanks, Josette, on the crack sealing issue there. I, I counted up all the cracks and did some multiplication and gave the number to her. So we probably could use some of that filler rope in there. I forgot about that. There's some of those pretty wide. I think he said there's some type of rope they lay down, tar rope or something, and then they tar over it, so. I don't know, a couple, a couple hundred feet of that maybe, but.
Any other questions? Counsel Allen.
Yeah, Joe said, do you say there was only six to 10 cedar trees going in Aura Bollmeyer?
No, those are just the cedars. So there's going to be, I'm waiting on Oregon ash. Nobody had. Uh, so there's going to be a lot of seedlings next, this coming winter, but these are bigger, more mature trees. So I'm doing Oregon ash and red, western red cedar in the more mature kind of a few years old, so that it's not all seedling.
And they'll be planted by this fall? Is that what you're thinking?
Um, so this, we have the cedars now, so the cedars are going to go in. There is a watering capability there and we did order more bags so that we could make sure they make it through this first summer without being dried out. Um, so those should go in, well, we have them, so a couple, next week? I don't know. I got to work on the works and all them.
All right. I had a question on the CZ sign plantings. I thought you said you had those plants and they were going to start going in?
Yeah, they're in.
Okay. I hadn't seen that yet.
Yeah, there, the, there's like bamboo and then three column-shaped capital pair that were in the design. And then the slab's been poured for the bench. The bench will be coming from the county. Um, and then once we get noticed, hopefully that we get the Oregon Trail Oregon grant. Um, then we'll be putting in the waste, the waste receptacle in the rest of the signage.
That was my next question for you was, um, we're going to find out about the grant at the end of the month?
Yes, April 30th.
So just say we don't get it, are we going to have a plan in budget to start replacing trash receptacles downtown, no matter what?
Yeah, we have that number. Um, we're, if we don't get it April 30th, then, then we would probably come to you guys and propose it out of streets.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Jer. Well, thank you, Josette. Moving on to items from the mayor and counselors, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all those involved in the April 17th Brunnonia cleanup, Make Brunnonia Shine Day. We had a pretty good turnout at the library. There was about seven or eight of us down there at the library and we were able to spread a load of bark dust and, and trim some brush and trees and bushes and it really, take the chance to drive by there. It really looks nice. And, um, and then they, there was a group up at the museum that did a lot of nice work up there in front of the museum. That really looks really nice. Um, and then Dale had a couple fellows helping with the lake on Saturday. So thank you all involved and wish there was a little bit more. And JR spent a lot of time downtown, pressure washing the sidewalks and helping out a couple of the businesses there and they really made a difference. And I was a little concerned with that high-powered pressure washer removing the sand, but he asserted me that it, uh, just took the dirt and the grime and, uh, and the moss and grass and weeds out and, and left the sand in place. So it really looks nice, JR. Good job. That's about all I have. Any counselors wish to share anything? Counsel Webb.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, put it on the record that being as a person that helped sponsor the SRO position up at the school, that I'm, uh, pretty displeased to see that the school district is backed away from continuing that program up there. I, uh, I'm hoping the school board will take hold of the reins and potentially make a change to that decision. So that's all I have to say on that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Allen.
I, I'd like to visit in-person meetings for the next
I, I'd like to visit in-person meetings for the next agenda, if anybody else would like to visit that subject again. I know it's probably not the exact time to do this, but I missed the beginning of the meeting due to some problems I was having, but um, I don't know if we're having our um, budget in person or virtual yet. And.
At this point, budget is, is virtual.
Is what?
At this point, budget will be virtual. I need to go online and see what all the governor's mandates are currently. Um, I haven't looked at budget since last year, so I'll see what, which of those are still.
And, and for me, it's so hard to hear and so hard to share information, passing around papers and I, I, with everybody getting, uh, their shots and everything, um, I'm even scheduled to take another one. Um, I just don't know. I think we should visit it next, uh, council and decide where we go from here. If anybody else wanted to, I wanted to, so.
Stephanie, do you have any more information you could share at this point on, on that for May?
I was hoping to present something next month.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Okay, get it on the agenda for May 3rd anyway. Any other discussions?
Yeah, how are we doing with the technology hunt? I know it's been going on for two or three months to be able to put a, a camera or a speaker in council so we could deal with the if people want to show up type subject.
That's what I'm hoping to present next month.
Okay, so I probably had a hard time hearing. I sometimes these speakers just don't register with my ears.
That is what I'm hoping to present next month. And it'll be a woo-hoo, we have it installed. You guys can be in person again. That's my hope.
Well, I was just wondering how the rest of the governments are doing, like the state of Oregon, are they all virtual and all of our other councils around our area, are they all virtual? Our planning commissions in person, other committees are in person. So I just, I just, I guess I need to know if it's a absolute rule, we can't be in person, or is it just a, we don't want to be in person?
No, the problem arises when you have audience members attend. There almost never is anyone at the committee meetings. Um, same with planning commission. If they were having a contentious public hearing, I wouldn't allow them to have their meeting in person. Um, you guys tend to have more audience members. It's not that you cannot meet in person. It's that we need to, I am working on finding a way to facilitate the public to meet virtually. Um, and there has been, um, issues or concern about people following the six-foot distancing and wearing your mask full-time. Um, it is a public meeting. You have to follow all the rules. Um, I know there was some frustration with having masks on, uh, previously and difficulty hearing people. I have a really hard time recording you guys. Um, I don't have very good speakers to be able to capture all of you guys talking, especially with, um, masks on. It really muffles it. Um, so I'm, I'm working on trying to facilitate having you guys in person. Um, the project I'm working with IT on is not just a camera, it is new speakers for everyone so I can capture all of you. There's some fancy two or three-way weird thing. I don't know the terminology. But I can reach out to IT. Well, we're working together on it, so.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I, I didn't hear you right the first time there.
Yeah, we've had several meetings, him and I, so.
Okay, anything else? If not, action item summary.
So I don't, I don't have anything other than staff's bringing, uh, to you guys. Council Webb's going to discuss with staff. And we're going to bring to you guys on the third, the schedule of payments for the reserves. Um, and bring back that resolution for adoption. And then I was, sorry, I had to take a call, but I was off for the peace tree. So is there movement staff needs to make on the peace tree? Steph, did you?
No, peace tree is going to the Parks Committee.
Okay.
So their liaison will present that. Okay. The other action item is that we'll be bringing back the ordinance for its second reading.
Okay.
Oh, Joe said, I did have a citizen ask about the water being on at the lake. He said it was supposed to be open on the 15th or something and they like to get water for their dog, but the water's all shut off around the lake?
We had a work order for that today.
The water's on at the lake because it was running a little bit when I walked around.
Okay.
Out the who's been by the.
I don't know. I don't know who the gentleman was, but he seemed kind of upset. So I said, I'll bring it up. My wife got a taste of that for once. She was with me.
Oh, no.
The sign says the 15th, I was told.
Okay. I think we're ready to adjourn this council meeting. Meeting is adjourned at 9:40 PM. Good night, all.
Good night.
All right.
Good night.